Pescu, please stand in so far as you are able.
What's your name and bill number?
Please bear our heads, thank you to Heavenly Father for the opportunity you've given us to serve this amazing country and beautiful city. We ask that you be with us tonight as we deliberate, help us to make decisions in the best interest of our community, Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as well.
Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull number 12 from the consent calendar for additional discussion on that item.
Okay, so it's not being pulled from discussion, it's being pulled into discussion?
Okay.
Yes. Okay. It's still on the agenda, just not on the consent. Any other items? Okay, is there any comment from the public on generic items that are of modicum of interest that are not on the agenda? Okay, no comments from the public, then we'll move on to our numbered items. We have Southern California Edison here to tell us the wonders of rate increases.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name's Bob Steens, I'm a Government Affairs Manager with Southern California Edison, and Conrad asked me to come in, I talked to him last week, to talk a little bit about our proposed rate increase. So our Southern California Edison's, our rate increase, our rate proposal, excuse me, it's a proposal we make every three years to the Public Utilities Commission, represents a thoughtful and balanced approach to infrastructure investment, so that Edison can ensure safety, improve reliability, and cybersecurity for our customers, as well as providing cleaner energy at reasonable rates, while also preparing the electric grid for the more complex future energy requirements. So Southern California Edison customers, including many here in the city, are quickly adopting distributed energy resources such as rooftop solar, as well as battery storage. And Edison must make significant improvements in areas of our service territory over the next 10 years, including installing upgraded systems and equipment to increase reliability and better manage what's becoming a two-way grid. Over the last, Southern California Edison currently has over 230,000 solar rooftop installations in our service territory, including about 400 residential customers here in Loma Linda. We're processing more than 4,000 customer requests each month, connect solar panels to the grid. So that is one of the major reasons for our proposed rate increase, is to modernize the grid in order to get the most out of it, to effectively manage and coordinate the interaction between the solar panels, also a lot of electric vehicles coming onto the grid, which all requires us to help modernize the grid. So that's the reason, one of the main reasons we're asking for our rate increase. I've been asked on the, the average monthly bill would increase in $3.56 in 2018, $5.00 in 2019, and $7.00 in 2020. And that's our proposed, that's not what we'll, the PUC will review everything, determine what the total is, and then decide how much of it gets raised. For low-income customers, under a couple of our rates, that increases less, and most of these increases will be mitigated, if you notice, I think in April and October of every year, you get a $30 clean energy credit, so that will help mitigate that rate increase.
Which division of the bill is increasing? Because it's, you've got about 100 different ways you get money.
So it's, it's the transmission and distribution part. The energy cost is just, is a pass-through. Southern California Edison doesn't make a profit off the energy costs, we just, whatever costs us, we go through a, I think, a yearly review of what it costs us to purchase energy on behalf of our customers, and that just gets passed on.
Yeah, so between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM, I pay eight and a half cents for distribution, and you're going to go up, you said 12%?
No, it's, well, it's $3.56 in 2018, the average, the total bill.
But I'm just wondering what the percentage increase is on the?
I can, I can look, I don't know if we have that broken down yet, but I can look and get back to you.
Okay. Because every kilowatt hour we buy is, it has a transmission component in it.
Correct.
So I know that your, your actual cost in the middle of the night is about four cents to, to produce, and about eight cents to distribute, and I was just wondering if that's?
Yeah, the distribution, the distribution costs don't really fluctuate, I mean, it doesn't cost us more to distribute power during the day than it does at night, it's the energy cost, what it costs us to buy.
Yeah.
And actually, our peak is shifting now to more late afternoon, early evening.
Two to 8:00 PM.
Yeah, it's because, you know, we're just seeing more, that's the peak time now, is more late afternoon and evening.
Yeah. I've heard rumors that you guys are essentially dumping electricity between 10:00 in the morning and 2:00 in the afternoon, because, because all of these solar come on, and there's not as much demand as there is electricity.
Between what time?
10:00 AM and 2:00 PM.
I, you know, I know we're, it depends on what the conditions are, if the wind's blowing, how hot it is, and I don't think, I know, I know we are a lot in the evenings, you know, selling power at very cheap rates.
Yeah. Quick question. Hypothetically speaking, let's say that all five of us decide that we don't like this rate increase, and pass a resolution saying that we don't want it, does that prevent the citizens of Loma Linda from having to get the increase?
In other words, can we stop your rate increase?
You can, you can make comment to the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay, so other than that, you're just notifying us because, just to let us know?
Yes, I was requested to come in and talk about this issue.
To give us a heads up. Okay, so we have no power or say, really, in it?
You have as much power as anybody else to comment to the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Couple of quick questions. One of the things I'm always curious about with, in the summer months, is there are alerts and warnings that go out every time we have hot weather, that, you know, try to limit how much power you use, so that we don't suffer blackouts. By upgrading the grid, is this going to do anything to alleviate that? Because the impression I have, and I'll use an analogy, and you tell me if it works or not, is I've got a car, with a gauge that shows me I've got a quarter of a tank, a half a tank, full tank, so forth, and it feels like in the summer months, the SCE only keeps a quarter of a tank filled, and you could run out, so you've got to be careful not to use your car too much. Is upgrading the grid going to increase the capacity, so that we don't have these risks of brownouts?
So there's two parts to that question, two parts to that answer question. One is the supply of electricity, and if you remember back in the early 2000s, when we were having, we were actually having a few rotating outages, that was an issue of the supply of electricity, the supply generation, because of, you know, we now learn market manipulation and other things. So that's not an issue.
So there really wasn't adequate supply of electricity? It had nothing to do with modernization of the grid, there simply wasn't enough?
Well, back in the, when we had the energy crisis in the early, late, I think, 2000s, that, I mean, it was a, a supply of energy. Now, the reason, one of the, a lot of times, the reason you do get the, like, the calls for conservation, sometimes it's, it's supply, but more times it's local, where the particular section of the grid is getting overtaxed direct capacity, that's why we'll potentially, you know, if you sign up for air-conditioned cycling, what we call air-conditioned cycling, where you agree for a cheaper rate, a reduction in your rate to turn off your air conditioner for, there's like three or four different programs. Yes, the modernization of the grid will help alleviate those situations.
Okay. I understood your answer, it didn't quite, it wasn't quite the answer that I was looking for. So when all of this happens, how full will our tank be? How much additional capacity will we have?
I'd have to look on particularly this area, I don't know what it is in this area, but it's?
The good news is, we haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't had a brownout this summer, have we?
Well, I don't think they've had a brownout ever, I mean, when's the last time? We're talking about rolling blackouts.
Yeah, the last thing, we call them rotating outages, just, is the term, was 2002 or something? You know, we do have, you know, as equipment fails, if a transformer fails, we do have outages, if, you know, if a transformer goes bad, or we have equipment at a substation that goes bad, or, you know, fires in the Cajon Pass can also eliminate, can also trigger outages, or, and sometimes, we had this, I forgot what it was, two weeks ago, with the heat storm, yeah, when lightning hit the Colton Substation, and, so, I mean, those types of things happen.
Yeah, sure, that makes sense.
But as far, yeah, I mean, all the, all the increases we're making, or the improvements we're making in the grid, do help on our local reliability.
Okay, and then the second question that I have, if I understood you correctly, the primary justification for the rate increase is to upgrade the grid to handle all the additional solar units that are going in?
And, and general grid modernization. We're trying to turn the grid back into, into more of a, I mean, the electric grid is still pretty, I mean, the technology hasn't evolved a lot, or the last, or the technology that's in place, hasn't evolved a lot over the last, I don't know, 40, 40 years or so, but there's a lot of improvements that can be made to have the grid two-way communication, because, you know, for, right now, in most parts of our grid, we don't know the power goes out until someone calls and says, hey, I don't have any power at my house. Hopefully, with smarter grid and more grid modernization, we'll be able to detect that early, and even fix it remotely.
Okay, so the economic question is, if you now have, if you now have access to more resources through these additional solar units that are going in, why not use that money to upgrade the grid instead of increasing fees?
I'm not following you there.
Okay, if I put a solar unit on my house, cover my roof with solar unit, panels, that increases the, the resources that you have for electricity, correct?
Correct.
When the sun is shining.
Well, that's not much of an issue around here, right?
Yeah, but after, after sunset, or as the sun goes down, it's a big issue.
Which, that's not when the capacity issues occur, though.
But the peak demand is between 2:00 and 8:00 PM, and 8:00 PM is when the sun is pretty low and the sky?
But I, but my point is, you have, we're essentially providing, if I have, I don't have solar panels yet, but if I had solar panels, I'm essentially not only reducing my costs, not counting the investment, but I'm providing additional capacity, power capacity, to Southern California Edison, correct?
Correct, and we, and we purchase that power back from, so if, if, we purchase the excess power back from you, so it's not, we don't get it for free.
No, I understand.
And then we still have to, and again, where the money we're talking about is, even if you have solar panels, that's producing extra power back into the grid, we still need to have the transformer that serves you, that goes both ways, the wires.
I understand that, the, the economics that I'm not understanding, is you have more resources, and, and, but yet, in order to evolve the infrastructure, to handle the additional resources, you're increasing the fees, and it would seem to me that, without understanding the economics of how the electrical company works, that you're getting the resources through the additional power and so forth already, that I recognize you have to pay for. So what I hear you saying is that we don't collect enough off the additional resources that the solar provides, to upgrade our system to handle the solar, I mean, it sounds like a cat chasing its tail to me.
It actually costs us more, when we, when we buy power from residential customers, we pay actually a retail, a retail rate instead of a wholesale rate. So it costs us more to buy power if, from a customer that has solar on their roof, than it does for us to go out and buy it on the open market.
So you're paying extra because of all these solar cells?
That's what it sounds like.
But it's, but it's also, there's, there's another part of the answer.
I mean, it's, it's a balancing, it's?
Yeah, but as far as total capacity goes, my understanding is that solar doesn't increase the total capacity, because it's a fickle source that comes and goes, and they actually have to fire up their generators, as though the solar is not there, because it comes and goes so quickly.
And that's not as true as, as much as it was probably five years ago, that's accurate. There is so mu, there's a lot more solar power, both the rooftop stuff, I mean, as, you know, you drive anywhere out towards Las Vegas, or, or you drive up north, there's a lot of solar, as well as a lot of wind, and it's, and, you know, the power for purchasing those longer-term contracts is, has come down fairly dramatically.
Okay. I appreciate your attempt to educate me. I'm finished.
If I may, a quick question. Will any of these upgrades address potential attacks from North Koreans with electromagnetic pulses?
That one is, I don't know the answer to that one.
Okay, I was just curious.
I doubt it.
I wonder if anybody ever actually worries about those things, other than?
There are a lot of people that do, but I, I don't know the answer to that.
This isn't going to be like the Oroville Dam, right? You're actually going to use the money, put it into the infrastructure?
Pardon? I'm sorry.
That's generation.
That's, yes, that's generation.
And I'm sure I know the answer to this, but just for clarification, how are customers going to be notified of this, and at what point? In other words?
The customers were notified, I, probably about six months ago or more, it's, they insert in the bill, and that's, that's how we notify customers of potential rate decrease, as well as there were, oh, a series of public hearings, some in, in this area, I don't remember exactly where, but there were a series of public hearings conducted by the Public Utilities Commission, and, that local public hearings.
No, I guess my fundamental challenge with it is, there's no competition. You're the dominant, you're the only player in the game.
That's why there's a Public Utilities Commission.
Correct.
It's a monopoly oversight board.
I'm sorry, the Public Utilities Commission is a monopoly, or?
It's a monop, it is a monopoly overseeing a monopoly. Okay, yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Item number two is a public hearing, it's a second reading, on something we started earlier. Can we just move the item? Well, after the city attorney's opinion, can we just move the item?
Can we just second it?
Well, Mr. Mayor, it is down as a public hearing. I was not here at the first meeting when this was introduced, but my understanding is, it was introduced, but the public hearing was deferred until this evening. The item before you is a simple ordinance to repeal our current regulations in the municipal code that regulate where registered sex offenders may reside, and restricts them from residing near schools and parks. The reason for the ordinance is that there have been cases that have come down in the meantime, that have said the cities are preempted from regulating the residences of sex offenders, so we have to do away with this portion of our municipal code, and rely upon the probation department, and, and the state to regulate persons who fall in that category. We have received a letter raising the potential for litigation against the city, we don't want to be in the forefront of that litigation, in fact, many cities have already repealed these types of ordinances. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we modified our ordinance to conform with the case law back then, that said we could no longer regulate the mere presence of sex offenders in certain locations, so we made that change. Since then, the case law has gone even further, and now we're prohibited from regulating where they reside, so with that, I would recommend that you open the public hearing, and take any testimony, and then move the action.
I have a question of our city attorney, are the threats coming from private attorneys general, or are they coming from sex offenders?
There is a particular law firm?
Private Attorney General, okay.
A group that represents sex offenders, and they're very active.
Yes. Well, I can say for my part, before the public hearing, that I'm in favor of repealing this law, because if you looked at the map that it generated, the only place sex offenders could live is in my neighborhood, so I'm glad this is going away. My house is as far as you can get from a school. So any comments, any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing, come forward, and speak your piece. No takers, so I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council? If you're inclined to move it, the appropriate motion would be to waive reading of Council Bill O-2017-01 in its entirety, and direct the clerk to read by title only and call the roll.
I move what you just said.
I second what you just said.
So you are duly instructed to read by title only?
Correct.
Titled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, repealing and deleting Chapter 9.28 of the Loma Linda Municipal Code defining and regulating residency of registered sex offenders in the city. And you may vote.
The middle one? Before I retire, I'll remember that every time.
Has anybody ever changed theirs once they hit it? I just wonder what the button will do.
We have, because there was a mistake, in fact, in past.
I've always wanted to vote for the empty seats around me.
There are no buttons there.
Well, I wanted to vote anyway.
There's one. Okay, there's the next one.
It unanimously passes, thank you.
She closed the vote before I could do it. Okay, that one passes, we'll go to our consent calendar, and remember, item 12 has been pulled out.
Do we want to talk about that now, so we can do it all together, or do you care?
What's your pleasure? Let's do, let's do item 12, let's get it over with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The background is Seminole County Transportation Authority, or SBCTA, is working on the rail line, called Redlands, passenger rail from San Bernardino to University of Redlands. As part of that, they will do all the improvement, and, and, but prior to the improvement to the track, they have to work on the existing utility that crossing the track, of which one of them is our existing water line on Richardson, that will be in conflict with the improvement. Being that our, our water line is in there right of way, so therefore, we'll be responsible for the relocation, improvement of that water line. We have been working with SBCTA for them to do design, and do the construction for all this improvement, but the city have to reimburse them for it. And, and, so this is an agreement.
Because the, the line, we're increasing the size of the line, or is it strictly have to do with?
It has to do with, they could have more capacity, the weight on, on, on the line, so the line is too shallow for them, so we need to lower it, but since we're going to be, do the improvement, I might as well increase the pipe size for future capacity for our well. So, so, the agreement that was drafted, presented in the staff report, was only for the construction costs, that, that we will reimburse them for the actual cost for the construction, but then Thursday, I received a phone call from, from Justin, said that we should reimburse them, we have to reimburse them for the design costs also, so it'll be additional $45,000, up to, up to $45,000 for the design costs.
I can design it for $12.
Well, at first, it was a lot higher, and I negotiated now quite a bit, so.
But I think $45,000 is irrelevant compared to $1.1 million. What, the full amount is $1.1 million?
Yes, but, but then they just had, they just had a bid opening this afternoon, and he told me that the, the actual bid cost is a lot lower than the engineering cost estimate. So we'll pay the actual cost, not, this is, the 1.1 is for the construction cost estimate, the engineering estimate.
So, okay, hypothetical speaking, what, what happens if we decide that we don't want to approve this?
They will cut off our water line.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yes, they will. They'll cut off our water line.
They literally just cut off the water?
They're probably not going to, but the problem is, we are in there right of way, it's just like?
We signed an agreement, when we put our water line through that railroad line, with the railroad, then extant, that if, if they needed us to get rid of our line, we would. So we're kind of stuck with it, and, and to me, the funny thing about this whole thing is, the whole project is a quarter of a billion dollars.
Well, I don't care how much they spend on it, I care that my residents pay more.
Four tenths of one percent of that cost is for us.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that cost, I'm more worried about the cost that we have to incur, and I'm just curious what our options are.
So when it was first put in, that was a regular rail line, correct? How much heavier is a regular rail line versus a passenger train?
Well, here's the thing, we signed, whenever you sign away your rights to a railroad?
We signed, we're screwed, I get all that, but the argument is that it's going to be heavier, and because our, our water line is too shallow, it could potentially damage it?
It's probably because of?
That's a bunch of crap, if a freight train is going by there.
Probably because of different code, and cha, you know, changes in requirements.
Nah, it's nonsense. SBCTA's got, they're too big for their bridges.
And, and the water, I mean, the money for, for this will be?
Pure.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, the money's going to come from where?
From the water acquisition fund, so.
And we have a balance in there.
Yes.
We have $20 million, eventually.
And there's no way for them to reimburse us for any of this? If anything, we're paying them, so?
And we don't even get a, we don't even get a train station?
And there's no ability to pay this over a period of time, instead of instantly?
I have staff from, Dustin, you want to?
Hi, Justin Farley, Chief of Transit and Rail Programs from SBCTA. Happy to answer any questions.
Does Dusty really represent us, or are you guys over there? Because it sounds to me like he's busier, justifying why you're having to pay, we're having to pay for this.
I complained about it.
Complaining is not enough.
I already heard the answers, that's the difference between you and me.
No, is there really no option, other than us having to pay $1.1 million, because you guys decided to build a train? I mean, what happens if you decide to add four lanes to that bridge, now we have to pay $20 million?
I think the key thing here is that the, as the mayor has mentioned, there's an existing license agreement in place, that license agreement was signed in 1986, with the previous owner of the right of way, so we're basically abiding by that license agreement. We've done, done the same thing with the City of Redlands, they're relocating significant number of their utilities, same thing with the City of San Bernardino, we're actually taking on that, that construction opportunity, but the City of San Bernardino is reimbursing us for those relocations as well.
So what happens if we just sell you the right of way?
I'm sorry?
You have it. You, you, you take over the right of way.
They already own it.
Well, that's, that's no different than, how do you call it, it's almost like, I have my property in your right of way, and now you're going to force me to pay for you to put a sidewalk on my property, because you guys own the right of way. It's really no, no difference. Am I not looking at it properly?
I, I think it honestly goes back to that, that, that contract agreement that's in place, yes, we, there is property that we own, there's a facility that is owned by the city, that crosses our, our property, and as part of that?
No crossing. No offense, you're not justifying it, you're just saying, you signed the contract, so you have, we have to do it.
Right.
He's not justifying it, we're not going to get an answer.
I understand, I'm just, it just, it seems to me like that's some, I mean, that whole project is what, $250 million? Obviously?
But that didn't matter.
Well, but the point I'm trying to make is, that amount is significant, so you're trying to look for every single way someone else can help pay for it, and in this case, this is one improvement you have to do, and you found an agreement that says, hey, guess what, we don't have to worry about, you know, while other places, you're having to spend millions of dollars acquiring property, just to build the thing, but in our city, you're having us pay to move a water line. When I think, I understand it was an agreement, it seems like the, the best way to deal with it is, you, we either share the cost of, maybe we pay part of it, you pay part of it, or you, you eat up the whole thing. I mean, you guys want to build this railroad that's going to be filled up with, you know, five passengers, at a, for $250 billion, and for a long time, I don't really care about that, but when, when we're having to pay for it, then I do care about it, so I'm not happy about it, and I'm just trying to figure out if there's some other alternative, other than having to spend $1.1 million. It, it reminds me of a proposal to put a, a train station for a million dollars for Amtrak, next to the VA, with the notion that somebody from Texas? next to the VA with the notion that somebody from Texas may stop to use the VA, and they're going to stop in Loma Linda. It makes no sense, it's just, the amount of money that you guys are spending on this thing is almost obscene, and now we're having to share that cost, so obviously there's no other alternative?
No, not at this point. And I think, to Jarv's point, this is an opportunity for the city to actually increase the capacity of that line. I think there's a benefit for the city there as well as part of relocating this water line.
Yeah, but the capacity is, well, we're replacing the line from there all the way to the city or just where the railroad is?
Crossing.
It's a million bucks to dig up one trench and change one pipe.
That just.
The issue here, I think the reason why it's such a high cost for this project is that at this location at Richardson, the tracks are directly adjacent to the flood control channel.
Yeah, I drive by it almost every day.
And so for that improvement, we actually have to bore under, bore the pipe underneath both the channel and the railroad right-of-way. And so that's why at this location, it is costly.
So that was my question. This is at Richardson?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's not even in Loma Linda?
Not even in the city. That's what I was going to say. It's, that's clear, that's in San Bernardino.
Our well, our well up there is in Loma Linda, but the pipe runs through other cities.
A little square piece of property there in San Bernardino belongs to us. So maybe you can hear me, but I doubt it, I doubt it, and I'm not trying to be mean. I know I am being mean, but I'm not trying to be.
It just comes natural.
It just does come natural. So, I'm not sure I understand how, if at one time freight trains traverse that line, that now a passenger rail, a light passenger rail, is going to be heavier.
I think in 1986, I'm not sure about what type of rail traffic was going over in that location. I think there's been, for several decades, there hasn't been rail traffic in that location. I could see that the railroad might have just approved a water line going through there with the understanding that, ah, we're not going to be running freight along that corridor.
Remember trains when I was a kid going through there?
This was 1986.
Well, no, this was before that, but I do remember trains.
I have a couple other questions. First question is, is it you guys have to do it, and there's no way we can do it?
At this point, I think actually having us do it would be cheaper for the project. There's economy of scale associated with our contractor that's going to be relocating a number of utilities for the City of San Bernardino throughout the city. So there's economy of scale to be accomplished there.
And as far as timing, where are you guys at with making improvements along the other lines? Are you busy physically starting construction projects from downtown Redlands through San Bernardino as we speak?
Right, so for the scheduled overall project, right now we're at a 95% design level. We plan on having the plans wrapped up by the end of this year. As part of the implementation of the project, we looked at doing the early utility relocation package. There's a lot of risk associated with the unforeseen underground utilities that you can't really see until you open up that hole in the ground. So that's part of the reason why we've advanced this package. With our bid opening today, we hope to have a contractor onboard probably within the next two to three months. But for the main line track construction, we'll probably have a contractor onboard, I'm going to say summer of next year, summer of '18, and then that's when you'll see actual work along the track and at the grade crossings.
So, how many different areas are you having to move utilities on this whole project?
At just about every, at grade crossing.
So when you, you said you were about to have a contractor onboard in three months, is that just for this portion or for all the other ones?
It will be for this portion and the crossings throughout the City of San Bernardino. So we have a similar situation with the City of Redlands. They, early on in the process, have decided to take on that responsibility to relocate their facilities. Granted, they have, I think, 16 crossings along this corridor. Each crossing, on average, has probably two to three utilities that need to be addressed in some manner.
So how many utilities to this date have been moved so far?
None have been moved so far.
And at this point, you're telling me the City of Loma Linda is going to be the first one that's actually going to start spending money on this $250 million project?
The City of Loma Linda and the City of San Bernardino, both. Those design package and construction package are, is lumped together.
And so there's no way to maybe postpone this for a year or two?
No. We have, our board has taken specific direction and action and has directed staff to move forward to process this, to move this project forward.
Okay, and then my last.
That train has left the station.
Well, that was my next question. What is the full amount of the whole project?
The total budget for the project is $280 million.
Okay.
And that's for design, construction, that's acquisition of the vehicles as well.
If I recall correctly, passenger services, there's something around 2021 or something like that?
End of 2020 is what we're shooting for. It might slip to 2021 depending on if there's construction delays.
What are the odds that at some point between now and 2020, this project dies? What would have to happen for this thing to just go away and it actually doesn't happen?
I would have to be elected president.
It could happen.
We have a full funding plan.
Okay.
The board is fully supportive of this project, so I would say this project is, will be accomplished.
So you have a way to generate the $280 million between now and 2020?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My question, of the $280 million, is our 1.1 part of that?
It is not.
So the project actually, with all of the different reimbursements from San Bernardino and Redlands and from us, the project is going to exceed 300?
Actually, that's not correct. The $280 million price tag, that actually does include the reimbursements. That includes some betterments from, the City of Redlands has identified some betterments at their stations. Esri is paying for a station, it includes those costs. University of Redlands is kicking in money for improvements to the station at the end of the line. It includes all of those costs.
And what percentage of the project total cost is utility relocations?
So I think the total, I think the utility relocation right now is probably on the order, including the City of Redlands piece, I think is around six to seven million, something like that.
Okay, so it's, that means the total cost is below 10% with utilities.
In your way to pay for this, are you not taking any bonds for it?
We are bonding against the major eye with sales tax revenues.
So if that's the case, why can't this be added to that and we pay it back in 30 years instead of having to cough up $1.1 million?
I think that goes back to that we have an agreement in place for this water line and that it's responsibility of the city.
It amazes me that you can borrow so much and yet we as a city have to suddenly cough up $1.1 million, which is a huge amount for a city.
But again, it's a responsibility that we agreed to encumber ourselves with.
No, I understand that, but it seems like there's got to be some financial mechanism by which we can pay this over a period of time rather than a one-time hit.
The bottom line, and I think you have to understand this, that's a big amount of money for a city this size, realistically, right? That's the ire here, is that, I mean, to us, we just don't move projects like that very often.
Understood.
I have one question for clarification. If I understood, Jarv, you had indicated that the additional $45,000 were engineering fees.
Yes, sir.
And I'm reading the staff report on the front page, and it says the engineering cost estimate for this work is 1.091 million. And so we're talking about additional engineering fees above the 1.1.
In addition to, correct. But now that he told me that the construction, since they have a bid opening this afternoon, the actual cost is a lot lower than the engineering cost estimate.
Yeah, so whatever the amount is.
And we're going to pay, we're going to pay the actual cost, so it should be lower. So what I'm doing right now is, I think the $45,000 additional, we're probably sticking and staying within this appropriation.
Oh, that it will be, will be able to absorb it within the 1.1?
That what I'm thinking, yes. So this agreement, I was asking that the City Council approve contingent on, City Attorney and I have a chance to review the final cause.
But you had built in some contingency to that.
Yes, sir.
Estimate.
And then authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Regarding the bridge on Mountain View, where the drainage ditch is, I think we're spending about $3 million with the IBDA for it, correct?
I'm not sure, I don't know what that cost is, I'm not aware of those.
But I'm just curious, in that case, wasn't there a cost-sharing agreement that we did with you guys for that bridge, if I'm not mistaken?
I'm not aware of any agreement in place. I know there's agreement, the IBDA has decided to move forward to fund that project and widen the road, partially and partly because of the rail line coming through. And it was my understanding that IBDA is funding a piece of that. I don't know how much the city has in regards to that project.
No, not the city, I'm just curious between, since you're responsible for building a railroad, you're dealing with the various costs. In that particular instance on Mountain View, is the IBDA picking up most of that bill or is it sharing it with you? That's my question.
IBDA is picking up the cost of widening the road and the bridge that is, goes over the channel to expand or increase the capacity of water flowing underneath that channel as addition, and widening the bridge itself. I think as part of that bridge expansion, that requires utility relocations, and so...
But that wasn't needed in order for you to put the railroad through there?
Not at all.
I see, okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Yeah, the track is further to the north of the channel.
It is somewhat related in that if we went and built our railroad to widen that road and rebuild that structure, it probably would have been twice as expensive to do that after the railroad had been completed, as opposed to the IBDA finishing ahead of, before of us.
Just out of curiosity, does the track already run adjacent to the Esri campus, or are they paying to move track in order to get a station built up right at their campus?
No, the track already runs adjacent to their campus. So we're building the road within the existing right-of-way that was purchased from the Santa Fe back in 1981.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So that $280 million is, they already own the right-of-way. If they didn't own the right-of-way, it'd be, how much would that much right-of-way cost?
I don't even want to speculate on that.
And that's for 700 optimistic daily writers, five days a week.
No, I think it's closer to 3,000.
Even more optimistic.
Remind me, what's the balance in the Water Acquisition Fund?
I don't, I don't have the money, I mean, the number is in front of me.
It's increasing annually.
It's increasing because of a part of a.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I mean, what the balance is and what impact this will have on it?
We have, we have money in there.
No, I understand that. So my question is, if we were going to spend this money for this project, what are the things would you have used it for as it relates to water?
I don't have the exact number, but we have been receiving payments from the successor agency, repayments for the loans from the, to the successor agency, and the last two allocations have been close to a million each. So we have, I'm thinking about four to five million in there.
So, but I mean, the amount of money that's put in that fund is done for things like this or some other things that you had in mind?
Yes, for example, the Water Acquisition Fund, we have a list of projects that can be paid. For example, upgrading the pipe along Richardson.
Correct.
Along Mountain View, putting an additional reservoir is part of the program that we have, using Water Acquisition Fund.
I'm just wondering, what, when were you made aware of the fact that we may have to do this, for example?
A year ago.
Okay, so you already had put it in your budget as an item that you knew you would have to use for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry, that was my question. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think you're off the hook, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the entire consent calendar.
I had a question on several items, but I think I've had them answered.
So that's a second?
And for Kaufman, the agreement with Caltrans, item 11, and that, we receive a million-dollar grant from Caltrans to do the improvement at the off-ramp. So that's, that's the money coming in instead of giving out, so that's a good thing.
So there was a motion on the consent calendar, is there a second?
Let me, if I could ask on 14A, only to pull that, not for questions, but because it's not frequent, but I do get asked about Loma Linda Connected Communities and the, you know, the whole computer technology infrastructure and so forth. Can you just address that, what's happening here in what you just told me in terms of this is only support now, but then this is all going to be handled by another agency?
Correct. Right now, this is interim, interim support to manage the, our current network, and basically that is a network engineering, one person onsite for support, and then equipment maintenance and call-out services. With the goal, and we talked about Allied Talis is taking that over, we're unable to come to an agreement with them, so now we're working with this other organization and have a contract we've passed back and forth a couple of times for review.
And this is scheduled to happen in six months.
Within the next six months, yes.
Yeah, and then they will provide all of these services, and we won't be looking at $93,000.
That is correct, then we will not be paying for this.
Regarding number 11, Jarv? Yes, sir. Million dollars? Is that something that just came up, or is that always part of the line that Caltrans would contribute $1 million to those improvements?
No, we have been working with them and trying to get them to help pay for it.
Sir, since they're making that amount, does that increase the amount they're working on?
Yes. Yeah, the project estimate to be, to cost 1.5 million, of which Caltrans will help us with 1 million, IBDA will pay the 250, and we pay the 250. Yes.
But this is only a temporary fix.
Correct.
Right.
The biggest negative of the project is that by partially fixing the problem, the next time Sabukta tries to figure out what project priorities there are, we would be lower on the list because our project is better than it would have been otherwise.
Yeah, but we're giving them $1.1 million to move the water, so that should bring this back up.
But with an estimate of 15 years before they do the project, this is worth doing, and some of us probably aren't going to be on the City Council in 15 years, I would predict.
You think one of us will lose in the next 15 years?
How much of the improvement do you anticipate that it'll add in the traffic? Or is it just?
Oh, yes, I plan to add an additional lane to both eastbound and westbound off-ramp, so that, the problem right now that we have is, we have a lot of truck traffic that's going northbound. So in the morning, the vehicle that's going eastbound on off-ramp, try to turn right onto the, into the city of Loma Linda, gets stuck. So what we're going to do is, we're going to widen the eastbound, the south side of the street, add additional lane.
The cell that is going to improve traffic will long enough to create a necessary maintenance.
No, it will help our Mountain View because the car can be able to turn quicker than get stuck at the intersection.
It won't fix all of the problems, though, because from time to time, these trucks forget how long their trailers are, and they pull in under the freeway, and they're still sticking out in the intersection and booger up traffic, and this won't impact that.
And the reality is that if you go north on Mountain View, there's more and more work.
Yes.
And onto Tiffick Avenue, so then they use Mountain View versus Anderson. So there's definitely more.
Yes, also I'm working with the SBCTA and asked them to redo their NEXI study, because right now, the current NEXI studies say that the City of Loma Linda is responsible for 70% of local mash for this interchange, interchange of this location at Mountain View and I-10.
How much are they going to, how much are they going to charge you for that NEXI study? $45,000?
And I said, I don't think so, because majority of traffic going northbound, not southbound, so that, another conversation we'd have with them.
Okay, there's a motion, a second on the consent calendar. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved in its entirety. Item number 16, Council Bill O-2017-02, second reading on amending the East Valley Corridor specific plan boundary.
Since we already did the public hearing, I'll move it. I'm sorry, reading and title only.
There is no public hearing on this one.
No, we did, we did the public hearing, it's second reading and approval.
So title only and?
Yeah.
Entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Amending the East Valley Corridor Specific Plan Boundary Along Parcel South of Redlands Boulevard and Generally Between California Street and Rhonda Street." Specifically, oh, excuse me, Specific Plan Amendment, Zone Map Amendment Number 15-086. You may vote.
I'm sorry, who, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Oh, you did.
Is this just item 16 or 16 and 17 together? Because on the agenda...
You can do them both.
Okay. So, we are, we're moving them both at the same time?
These are ordinances, so I would do them separately.
Okay. Okay. That's fine. We had a ghost vote.
It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay. Item 17, Council Bill O-2017-03, second reading, also amending the official zoning map.
I'll go ahead and move council bill.
I'll second it.
Well, that's actually instructing to waive the reading of the bill in its entirety and read by title only and conduct a roll call.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, amending the official zoning map of the city of Loma Linda from East Valley Corridor Specific Plan, Special District and Planned Community to Planned Community with a Planned Development Overlay and Adoption of the Citrus Trails Master Plan to serve as the development text and map tied to the Planned Development Overlay. Zone Change Map Amendment Number 18-087. And you may vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Once again, we have an opening on our planning commission. Actually, I thought we're just reappointing two members. We have two openings. We're planning to fill them with the same people.
Okay. I move that we reappoint the two individuals, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Nelson.
I second.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm supportive of this. The only question that I have is what is the process when we have an opening? Because rare occasions, but I do have people stop and want to, at some point, get involved in the city. So, what is the, the policy or protocol regarding reappointments? In other words, if you're on the planning commission and, is that what we're pointing to? Yeah. And you like it and you want to stay there, do you have tenure for life until you decide you don't want to be on it any longer? Or how does that work?
It's, it's up to the city council. If you decide to change, like, for example, this two, you said, no, we don't like to, to reappoint these two people, we would like to open up for the member at large, you can do that.
So, has there been any...
Yes.
Advertising of this?
So, this was open up for people to put in applications?
Not, not at this time. The two, the two terms that are expiring have indicated the willingness to continue to serve and has to be reappointed. It is up to you, either to reappoint them or direct staff to, to open.
Okay. I, I thought it was already open. Historically, we have, we have had circumstances where people desired to continue and we selected new members. We've done that before. Yeah. But I didn't realize that we didn't, we hadn't advertised them at large. I see what you're saying. So, just because they just decided they want to stay on, we're just, as a council, deciding to reappoint them rather than open up for applications?
Because I've also, I also recall that in the last time this happened, there were more applicants than positions opening, and so we had to make a selection. And some people were left out.
Well, it, it's gone both ways. We've been to have times where we didn't have applicants and we had to recontinue the process because nobody applied. And then sometimes there's been two and sometimes it's only been one. So, it varies, but...
I have no objection to these candidates. I know them both, they're good guys and as far as I know, do a very good job. So, I have no issue with that. It's the process that I do have concern about because we have had applicants that have been interested in serving that we have not selected.
So, what, what we've done in the past is when there is an opening and we have a space, is then we go for applicants. So, what you would do tonight is either reappoint these guys or create an opening that then we would go to fill.
And then they can reapply along with whoever else may want to apply.
If that is your choice. From the staff that works with them, they are very competent and...
I have no question about that.
Perform a great service for the city and great skill.
Yeah. I have no, no question about that.
I noticed that their terms expired in June, right?
Yeah.
But yet, we're approving this in September?
Yeah, we missed it. They've been doing such a good job, it's just kind of one of those, oh, yeah, we need to reappoint them.
Well, I mean, to be honest with you, personally, in the interest of fairness, I, I would prefer that we open this thing for a week. If nobody comes forward, then we'll go ahead and forward with reapplying them, just so we feel like we do give the other opportunity for other folks. Obviously, the consensus is that we're content with who they are, but that we don't want to close the ability for other people to weigh in as well. I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm rethinking my motion if, if I didn't realize that we hadn't opened it up. Well, my thoughts on that are that if we're perfectly content and, let's say, hell-bent on reappointing them, it would be kind of rude to someone to say, oh, we're going to open it up and, oh, well, we were just joking, we're going to reappoint the two guys. So, I think at this point, it's somewhat of a, somewhat of a break with tradition to do it this way, but so was the time when we replaced renewals with new people. We broke tradition that time and we were castigated for it, so...
What, what was it that we were castigated for?
No, you weren't from the council then. It was before your time.
Oh, before my time.
Yeah. We replaced three members.
Well, now that I'm here...
We, we basically cleaned out what was the, the prior...
Ah, I understand. I understand. And again, I am making no statement about the people involved. I know them both, they're great people. And I'm not even stating my concern just about planning commission. I'm saying as a general policy, if, because it's a growing community and there are more and more people that are moving in, that do have an interest in getting involved at one level or another. And I've assured the people that have talked with me that, you know, of course, there are opportunities. Just let us know what you're interested in and so forth. But I do think there is a responsibility that we have to then, you know, give them the opportunity to apply.
I, I would ask, I'd ask Barbara if she's received any inquiries.
But if...
I mean, just general inquiries. If people call up and say, hey, I'm interested in some type of public service, what, what's available or when do you reappoint planning commissioners or any of those type of queries? Because that might be an indication of whether or not, even if we open this up, we'd actually get any interest.
I have not had any inquiries since I've taken over.
A lot of the time, people approach the council members saying, hey, if there's an opening at the planning commission, I might be interested.
No, I, I get that. So, I would, I would assume that any of the five of us would speak to that. I know Councilman Daley's doing that. I have not had anybody approach me like that, so...
Well, I mean, back to the mayor's point about how it may seem rude to open up to other people for indicating we're going to appoint these people anyway. My counterpoint to that is, I have no problem with appointing them, but I also have no problem with someone else standing up and saying, give me a shot and here's why you may want to consider me. So, I want to hear if that person even shows up. And if they do, I may change my mind and decide that maybe it is time to change folks. So, I'm, I'm still inclined to open this up for the, the community, just to see if anybody shows up. And the way things have been going, doesn't look like they are, but at least we give someone else the opportunity to weigh in. That's just to be fair.
Well, I'm also sensitive to the fact that when we had the multiple people that came and presented themselves and answered our questions, that at the end of that, after we made our selections, we thanked profusely the people that had applied that didn't get the job and said, stay available for other opportunities and, you know, we want you to serve the city. So, I'm concerned about them as well, but...
Yeah. Most of the inquiries I get are people who want to replace various members of the city council.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
One step at a time.
Mayor or is that...
Mayor. Yeah. They come to me and say, are you willing to step down for me? Yeah. So, I mean, anyway, I guess I'm, you know, if the council decides that they want to proceed with how we're doing it, that's fine as well. But I'm, my view, my personal view is that we open it up and then, at the next council meeting, if nobody puts in application, then obviously we'll have no choice but to appoint these people. Are you interested in doing the same thing with regard to the historical commission, the parks and recreation, the budget? Um, not, not, not so much for those. I think, but these are really important positions. These, these are much at a different level.
I, I would argue that if you're going to call one important, they're all important.
I agree.
Just some of them have to file with the... FPPC.
FPPC.
Yeah. No, this is, planning commissioners are significantly much more powerful than any of the other committees. I mean, yes, they're important, but as far as weight, they, they hold a lot more weight, so...
I learned many years ago, Still Waters Run Deep. I'd like to hear what Councilman Leonard has to say about it, even though we can't read tonight.
I find myself in the uncomfortable position of agreeing with the Councilman Daley and Doc, and Mr. Popescu here.
As uncomfortable as that is.
They're supposed to be enlightened. It's always discomforted me.
However, then the mayor spoke and he made a powerful argument. It surprised me. And...
Sounding like a politician.
But I don't, actually, I don't see what the harm would be in when these things are coming up, posting it on the website and saying, here's the, here's the positions that are opening up. If you're interested, apply. And if nobody applies, nobody applies. But I, I think we should make it available for people to see.
And that's actually a very good point. I, I have no problem with that if it's a standard and... Exactly. But, but what I would like to do is make it obvious to the applicants that this is an open seat versus this is a filled seat that where the incumbent is still standing for the position. And I think that would help the people deciding to put the effort in to run for it. Because, you know, if it's, if it's someone everybody's satisfied with, you don't have much chance as a newbie. Yeah. I don't know. I mean, but I... I'm just, you know, I'm okay with it. I just, I just think there should be some distinction on there. This is for an open seat or for an incumbent that's being renewed, do you want to try to boot him? You know, look, and looking back on it, it sounds like the prior council had adopted this policy that if nobody applies, we automatically don't even open the position if someone's interested in staying on. And I think that if someone's really interested in applying, it shouldn't matter whether people decide to stay on or not. They should apply because someone's term is up. And if they can approach them individually and say, hey, by the way, I'm interested in being a planning commission. Do you plan on staying? I notice your term is up. And then they can just, you know, talk amongst themselves.
And I agree with you, Councilman. I, from my perspective, why have terms if everybody just keeps getting reappointed?
Yeah.
It's a tenured position.
I mean, you can be reappointed. That was our, that was our response when we were castigated for, for changing horses in midstream before you came on board.
Yeah. We may get castigated again, I don't know.
Well, I mean... Never stopped.
That's a little different.
Never stopped us. Yeah. Because there were people who were interested. But I just, I, I don't want someone to only apply because the incumbent has decided they're interested in staying. You know what I mean? It's... Well, there's, while, while we're all ruminating, there is a request from the public for a comment.
Thank you, Dick Wiley, Loma Linda. I will tell you, in the last 12 to 15 years that I've been at those planning commission meetings, this is the best informed group of planning commissioners that I have seen. I mean, you may think, or the city may think, planning commission just makes decisions. There's a lot more that goes into decisions. You have to know a lot about design, construction, insight, the whole thing. And as a well-rounded group, this last one has really impressed me, that they're on top of things and they're doing the best for this city. As they say, after 12 to 15 years of watching it, there've been some that don't have experience, but they're making good decisions. But when you look at, example, the hospital going up, they don't deal with it, but John Q. Public has to know something about building of that size, what needs to go into it and what need to look at to make a good product in the final end. So, I should wholly, wholeheartedly go along with the idea of keeping what's there.
And again, to restate what I've already said, this has nothing to do with the names of the people or the individuals.
It's the process.
But, but the other benefit that I see in the interest of fairness is if we had a deadbeat member on the planning commission or whatever other committee that seemed appropriate to remove, we have a process by which we can do that, as opposed to we only open it up when we have somebody we want to replace.
Yeah. Typically, we'll get a report that so-and-so hasn't been here for three years or whatever. When that happens, then we tend to ask them if they continue, want to continue. And if we don't hear from them, then we just essentially let their term, let them term out and then replace them. But that's not the case here.
But I think there's no harm in putting it on the website and just saying, terms expiring in the next three months, here's a deadline to apply if you're interested.
How about this time? Is there, is there a planning commission planned for the next month?
Well, this one, we're already three months into the year. I wouldn't even think about that. I mean...
We will have one for October. The, the existing commissioners can continue until they're replaced by you. So, the term is kind of a formality of reappointing.
Okay.
So, it's not going to keep us from that. And I just really want to reiterate, Mr. Wiley, is this is really right now a skilled and talented group and there's this pretty steep learning curve for a new guy to hit this. And we have some very experienced, capable people on this commission right now.
Sure. But I'm saying the same thing Mr. Daley did, which is for the future, this is what we should do. I'm not talking about what we're doing right now, tonight.
So, this time, you're proposing renewing?
Yes. Uh huh. I'm talking about for the future. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that for the future.
Well, here's a suggestion. We'll go ahead and reappoint these individuals, but then maybe put an item on the agenda, which is a policy that from now, moving forward, any of the vacancies on any of the other committees or planning commission need to be automatically opened when a term expires. So, it's very clear for everybody how we're proceeding moving forward. Does that, are you comfortable with that idea?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
So, that's an instruction to staff?
Yes, staff will bring it back. Yes, no problem.
Okay. So, I'll go ahead and continue to reiterate my motion to move to reappoint these two individuals.
I'll second if it hasn't already been.
Okay. There's motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Duper had seconded, if I'm not mistaken, but that's okay. But it's... Is there any opposition? Hearing none, they are reappointed. Item number 19, there's an offer.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we had the gentleman from SE here, here earlier discussing infrastructure projects and improvements. This is an offer from Southern California Edison to acquire easements along the Edison right-of-way. Over the course of the next four to five years, they will be expanding the Edison power distribution, or sorry, transmission network by putting a second line of towers down the entire easement from essentially the desert hot springs area where the solar plant is to almost out to Corona. And a big portion of it will be passing through the city. To accomplish that, because there will be more towers, they will need, and a relatively small, considering the size of the project, easements, all of the easements they are requesting are in the South Hills in the Preserve. So, there is no development, no construction, and the land underneath is still available for recreational and hiking and walking purposes. So, it would not impact any of our existing uses to the land. There is a request as well for a temporary materials yard that would be directly to the east of the dog park on Beaumont Avenue. We just put in that cell tower there right above that, and that would essentially be kind of a work yard where they lay down materials as this project progresses.
What do the aesthetics look like?
Relative to the easements or relative to the towers?
The towers.
There will be one more row of towers. And this is, this is not, how do I put this? The, the easements will allow, you can see in your packets, very small slivers of, you know, where the towers kinda turn corners or one, one spot that's some widening. But yes, there will be one more row of towers.
These, these are towers like the ones that are just to the east of us?
That is correct.
Between the houses. So that's where the towers would go?
They.
They're going, they're, they'll all be in South Hills.
Correct. Well, through, the easement through town and then up through the South Hills, yes.
Does that in any way limit the access that the public has to the area?
It, only during the construction phase.
Oh, okay. So there's no impact?
No, no. The only, the only thing is, is that they will ultimately disassemble these towers and reassemble them in new places with a third line through there.
I see. Okay. So they're not adding to it, but they're redoing the whole thing?
Yeah, they're, essentially over time, well, right now we have two sets of towers going through town. They will disassemble the two and put it back inside that same space with a third.
So basically, the twelve percent increase that we're taking from the residents, we're getting back in easements?
That's correct. You're, you're buying your, your increase back.
It was this, just out of curiosity, was this income anticipated in our budget or is this new? Wow, that's a significant amount.
So just, just for clarification, so the same towers, but just additional lines on the towers?
No, the tower will be, there'll be different towers. So this is what will happen. There'll be new, new wire on top of, of the, of the tower. So therefore, I have to replace the tower. So what I have to do is have to put in a temporary pole and bring the existing wire out into a temporary pole. And then they put in a new tower, replacing on the same location, the existing one. And then they put the wire back, additional wire on top.
What's the, what's total timeframe?
Four to five years.
Okay.
And it'll be, it'll be frozen in.
One tower at a time?
It will not be a rolling progression. So they're gonna do all the tow, all the prep, all the towers, all the, so the entire line will be worked on rather than a rolling progression.
I just want the council to remember, we live in a community of very health-conscious, outdoorsy people that enjoy being up in those hills. So consider the aesthetics of the construction and all the extra activity and all that other stuff that'll be going on because we'll hear about it. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying we will hear about it.
My question at that point is, do they have eminent domain powers?
They do.
And is this in lieu of condemnation?
There's a couple pieces to Councilman Duper and to you, Mr. Mayor. First, they can do the construction in the easement regardless of whether we grant them existing easements. This is really a very, what we're granting them or talking about granting them is a small section in the South Hills. And to answer your question, yes, they do have eminent domain powers. This is their offer at the fair market value to obtain those easements. And should we disagree, then I'm sure they will exercise the powers they need.
And if we choose to fight, all we're fighting over is how much money they pay and not whether they take the easements or not, because those are granted to them under their powers.
This is for additional easement.
Yeah.
So, and the city attorney may, may be able to clarify. So the work that they want to do in the existing easement is going to happen because we have given them the, the right to do that. The eminent domain would only affect those pieces in the South Hills that are additional.
But my point is that we can flap our wings and jump up and down all we want, and they're going to do the project regardless. The only thing we'd be fighting over is how much they pay us, if we fought them. Because eminent domain, they're granted the authority to take it as long as their board has established that there is the need for it. And they've gone through, jumped through the hoops that are required under eminent domain law.
That's true. We could inconvenience them in the process, but ultimately we can't prevent the work on the easement.
The only thing we can fight is the price. And I've, I've been on the, I've been on Sandbag long enough to see Edison's side of this 'cause Sandbag does this all the time. And they always tell us every time that they can't stop the project. All they can do is haggle over the price.
I have an elementary question. What's, what's the legal difference between an easement and a right-of-way?
An easement is a limited use of somebody else's property. So you're entitled to that specific use, which could be above ground, below ground, or on the surface, or in the air. A right-of-way is typically more applied to roadways, which is, can be a form of easement, or it could be an outright grant.
So they're kissing cousins, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
I just think we oughta gear up for a public perception issue because when people see construction in those hills, it is going to send them into a flurry.
But essentially. Essentially, all the construction does is add a cable.
At the end, at the end of it, after five years, though. I mean, this is a, this is a long-term project. So just so we're all aware.
You're right.
Well, not that we're, we can ask any concerned residents as to what's happening. We're adding lines for future houses.
We can tell them it was part of the mayor's growth initiative.
Yes.
Well, it's actually to stunt the growth of everyone who lives around the wires.
And to your point. Does it increase the buzzing? Now it's gonna be like twice as loud?
It increases the psychotic voices.
It actually, the staff report says that this new line is, I'm trying to remember just what it was. Anyway, it's, it's more environmentally friendly and higher capacity or something like that.
It, it is essentially a thicker, a thicker wire, which will allow more power to be transmitted across it with less, whatever vampire waste they have and.
At a higher voltage.
So is this an informational item or do we have to make a decision?
As long as there's money involved, we have to make a decision.
This is a decision. And, and one final one to Councilman Duper is, anytime something happens in the South Hills, just like when they're, they're grading for the new groves up there, we do have to deal with the public relations of that. So we're, we're aware that we do have to.
I'm just wondering if maybe we should get out ahead of it and put something out.
That's a good point.
That's a good point.
Basically states that, hey, this is an Edison right?
Edison's not only raising your rates, they're gonna.
They're gonna destroy your hills.
The easement.
Improving the trails.
So how do we, how do we move this? This is a complex item with A, B, C. Can we just move item nineteen? I'll move item nineteen.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved.
Thank you.
Item number twenty, League of California Cities Annual Conference. And our voting delegate is, perchance, the president-elect?
That's right.
Of the Southern Calif, or the inland counties?
Inland region.
Inland region.
So we have, we have on the packages, we have two resolution that the, the league will like the, the representative to vote on Friday afternoon. So that's be Councilman Duper. The first resolution is for the request that governor and legislator to, to open, enter into discussion with the league and other public safety stakeholders to identify and implement strategy that will reduce the unintended negative impact on existing criminal law. That's the first one. And the second one is, is for the league to, to work with the governor to amend the government code number three eight six one one to clarify definition of local control, providing the board statutorys, authority for the local official to determine emergency services level and direct emergency medical respond within that jurisdiction. So that's a two, two item.
Sounds like good.
It's local, local control. That's all it is.
Good propositions. I'm in favor of those.
So the only, the only question I have is that, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, I believe I get a vote for being on the board anyway. So I don't know if we wanna maximize our vote or if it really matters. I don't think these are gonna be hard ones.
It's not gonna be a split vote.
These are not gonna be contentious.
So what, can we give you two votes?
Raise both my hands?
Yeah, but only him can vote.
Does this, does this vote?
We can make him the voting, what I'm saying is, he could vote and then I can vote as, on behalf of the, as the, of the league executive board too, so.
Does this, does this vote occur after you receive the gavel?
Yeah, I think so.
Is there a parliamentarian? If there's not a, a formal parliamentarian, then you can judge that you get two votes.
This is usually at the end of the, of the session and everybody pretty much vote, yes.
Yeah.
Not even discussion.
And then from here, it goes to the statewide.
Yes.
Chapter.
No, no, these, these resolutions, 'cause it's at the annual conference.
Right.
These are set in stone.
Yes.
The policy committee stuff has to go through the state committee.
But then this is.
But these are statewide because one of them.
This is authorized the league to start meeting and discussion with the governor.
Well, on.
But these are final votes.
On both of these.
It's the annual conference.
Yes.
Okay.
But you're, you're right. A lot of the other stuff.
Yeah, I, I went, I went to this conference and believe me, there's a ton of people there. So one or two votes aren't gonna make it down. Okay, so are you duly instructed? Okay.
You guys wanted a no vote.
Just vote no on the crazy train.
The only, the only one in the room.
Vote no on the crazy train.
My council told me we have to vote no.
Okay, so that's the last agenda item. Are there any reports of councilmen?
When is the next city council meeting again? October. Okay. Well, it's worth mentioning that, I'm not sure who's paying attention, but we do have a air show coming up at the airport in October, the, let's say twentieth. But we'll bring that up again. Let me look at the exact date.
Yeah. I hadn't heard about it. That sounds interesting.
It is, it's a two-day event this year, so.
Two days?
It's gotten bigger. Hopefully, one day when we have airlines, we'll can put the air shows to bed.
I won't hold my breath that long.
But anyway, and I guess, since we're talking about the airport, there is starting, you, you'll probably read in the paper soon, but starting November, beginning of November, we're gonna have four flights a day from UPS. And if everything goes well, that will, and middle of December, and we hope to impress them that they'll continue to have a regular flight every day after that beyond Christmas.
Where's their, they have a facility somewhere?
Yeah, it's the, it's the hangar that the sheriffs used to be in, the seven ninety-five. They're in the process, we're investing half a million dollars in rebuilding the offices and bathrooms there. And they've completely taken apart a whole assembly building in Ontario Airport and reassembling it at our airport. So it's a huge project. They're all gonna have, once, right now they have, you know, several dozen workers work it. But once they have the regular flights, we're gonna have two hundred employees working there. And it's gonna be a full, how do you call it, package, assembly facility. So they're taking the whole hangar and just, trucks are coming in.
Is this in addition to their operation in Ontario?
Oh, yeah.
Or it's replacing a portion of what they have there?
It's an addition, but they had to take the hardware from there to put it over here. It's, you know, demand for e-commerce just keeps going, growing. More and more people are buying online. And even though Amazon got their own airplanes, they haven't gotten their act together and actually putting them all in use. So right now UPS still has the capacity to move more Amazon stuff, so. So it's a good thing.
They connect directly with Amazon on the airport property or no?
I, I'm sorry?
Do they connect directly with Amazon on the airport?
No, no, it doesn't. This one is separate. So it's gonna be stuff that goes through their distribution center and then goes on trucks over to the airport. Eventually, our plan in talking to Amazon is to develop a on-airfield access from the existing facility. But what, it's a matter of Amazon being in a position to do it, 'cause right now they're not.
So is this going to affect in, in, I assume it'll affect somehow the UPS facility just across the border in San Bernardino here?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure where the packages are coming from. I mean.
Distribution center off of Tippi and.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm not sure the relationship between that and here, other than it's less traffic for them. 'Cause I think that these items used to be shipped into Ontario and then moved over to Tippecanoe. Now they're gonna be shipped straight here. Technically, it'll be a shorter, shorter drive for them. But, I mean, we, we've had some talks with UPS about significant expansion at the airport. I mean, significant, so.
Good.
Anyway, that's just a little bit of.
Okay. I don't know who sent this to me, but from an anonymous phone number, it says, Amtrak passenger trains weigh, with passengers, two hundred and eighty thousand pounds. Freight trains are about four hundred thousand. So they're lighter and they still have to move our water lines.
I grew up over there, so I remember there were trains that actually went through there one time, a long time ago, but.
And the buses still, the buses still stop and open their door all these years later. Okay, any reports of officers?
No, sir.
Okay, then the city council agenda is adjourned. And we go to our exciting successor agency agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted to that?
No, sir.
Any comment from the public on non-agenda items? I don't see anybody jumping up. Consent calendar?
I'll move it.
Okay, there's motion to second. Further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. Under new business, we have items three, four, and five.
Let, let me just give you a quick summary of number three, four, and five. Number three is, is, you remember a couple meetings ago, you approved the tentative track map that adjacent to the west of California Street, adjacent to the RDA property. As part of that proposal, there's supposed to be a road at Park, Park, Park Avenue that going west and come out tied to Benmore. So this easement is, will be for, for that road, the access road. So, so the city, the staff recommend that you approve the offsite easement for this access road on the successor agency-owned property.
I move the item?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion to second. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved.
Okay, item number four is the, the sale of the property at the northwest corner of Redlands and Richardson. This afternoon, we had a meeting with the, the oversight board for this property. Because the procedure is, we have to go through the oversight board first and then come to the city council and then go to the state department of finance.
This is, this is Richardson and Redlands, the one?
Yes, sir. The vacant parcel on the west side. We have two, first of all, the property was appraised for nine hundred, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, okay? We, we received two offer. One is they're, they're willing to pay five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar for the property and they're gonna build a Asian vegetarian restaurant with, with some market, a supermarket on it.
Happy family.
Happy family, okay. You wanna be, so happy family, they want to build.
Already over here.
Yes, they want to, want to build their own.
They want their own site.
Yes. And then, so that's, that's one offer. The, the second offer is, is a developer that would like to, to build a, would like to pay.
Auto parts.
Nine hundred and, nine hundred and.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five thousand dollars, which is the price value, and would like to build an auto part and.
And a gas station.
And a gas station, thank you. So for the value. So the staff recommend that we will sell the property to the second buyer, which is the builder, the developer is a builder, and for, for, for nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar price value, which will in turn provide us more sale tax than the restaurant and the market.
It's twice the sales price and ten times the sales tax revenue.
Yes.
What, what kind of a gas franchise?
We, we, we don't, we don't know yet. So we're working, the same thing with the, the auto part.
Auto parts is probably in O'Reilly's. They've been pushing really hard to get a, a location in that area.
So thankfully for us, they had, they also gave the higher bid. Because if there was a higher bid for the, for the restaurant with one-tenth the sales tax revenue, the taxing authorities would have wanted the higher sales price.
I invite the restaurant to look for another piece of property in our town because I think they would be here.
There's a, there's a very large drive-in theater property.
Well, there's also empty, empty units as well, or by, by, by staters. Although they're unfortunately very expensive to rent.
But I, I agree with the comment that I. But I, I agree with the comment that I, I think we need to be sure to, and I'm sure Conrad will do that, but to encourage them and even give them ideas of some of the other properties that would be available.
Yes, sir. Yes, we have been.
Okay, so is there a motion in a second to...
Sumut.
Second.
Agree with the sale of this property? There's motion to second. Any further discussion? I guess I'll ask the same question of the city attorney that I asked of the attorney for the Oversight Committee. Why, when we're selling a property like this, is there not some kind of a public hearing?
Well, the answer would be it's not required.
Yeah. Yeah, and Mark Hipps' response to that was, if there were, he agreed with you. It's not required, and the better argument is not to do a public hearing. But he said if there were an argument, he would expect it to be a responsibility of the successor agency and not the Oversight Board to have that public hearing. So I'm sitting, presiding over both of those, and neither one has a public hearing, and I'm getting a consistent answer, so I thank you for that.
Well, it's nice to know that Mark agrees with me.
Jarb, can you remind us what percentage of the sales price actually is going to go to the city?
It's likely one-half or one percent or something.
We have, it's a total of seven agencies, I'm not sure how many.
We get eleven percent, don't we?
We get about eleven percent.
Okay.
But the proceeds will actually go to the county, and the county will then distribute to the taxing agencies.
So our portion might be eleven percent, you said?
It'll be a hundred thousand.
That's not bad, okay.
Okay, is there any opposition to the motion? I hear none, so that's approved. Item number five is even more exciting.
Yes, this is the item that the, the RDA also used to own the seventy-point-eight acres of the land between Redlands Boulevard and Mission Road. You remember, I brought it at the close session, that the city will, would like to do entitlement for this property. And as part of doing entitlement, we're required to do environmental impact report, EIR. That will cost about seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So this afternoon, I took it to the Oversight Board to request there be a reimbursement agreement for this fee, for this cost, whereas the city will front the money to pay for the, the study or the environmental impact report, and the proceed from the sale of the property will pay the city back, and then the remaining will go back to the, to the, the different agency.
Can you...
Proceeds initially before it's divided out, or that's...
Before. We get ours first.
We get ours first, right?
And then whatever left over then go to them. But then this is subject to the approval from the State Department of Finance.
So first they have to approve the agreement before we...
My, my question about the amount and expenditure of the amount, I know this is an estimate, but as you move forward with doing EIR, are you going to go through a process in which you might get bids from various agencies or businesses that can do that? Because that seems like a really high amount for an EIR.
So, well, that's not just the EIR, that's for the, the full planning, engineering, and to bring this thing from end to end. Our estimate was based upon what they did for the property to the east. They said they were somewhere a little bit over a million dollars...
Okay.
To bring that to fruition, but they had about two hundred thousand dollars of staff time in there. And our plan is, is that we'll, we'll put this out for an RFP or an RFQ.
So you're going to look at several companies to do this?
We have people interested, however, you know, we're, we're looking for qualifications, not necessarily price, because we have the person that's done the environmental on the VA project, project and the one next door, and pro, and probably the person that's done the land planning on the one next door. There would have to be somebody really remarkable to come in to undercut those guys.
What's being approved tonight is the reimbursement agreement, but it's not the expenditures of these funds with, with any particular business?
That is correct, correct. We have to come back to you to award the contract.
Okay, thank you.
And it was, it was interesting that the comment from the members, from the members from other taxing authorities that were on the Oversight Board, they said, we wish everybody would do this. So they were really encouraging us to do it, but also giving us wishes of good luck with the Department of Finance. You know, we're hoping that the doubling of the sales price of the property will convince the DOF, but, you know, they're, they're conditioned to say no to everything.
The staff recommended you approve and agree, reimbursement agreement.
So there's a motion? Is there a second? There's a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. Any reports of officers? Hearing none, that is adjourned. We go to our housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted? Any public comment? No takers. Consent calendar?
Move that. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. Chair member reports? Reports of officers, we're adjourned. Thank you. I've got to get your eye fixed.